Small. Yeah.
On the north end here. Eric. Hello, everyone. Whoa, you can hear me. I can't yet. Welcome to the May meeting of the Bonita County Board of Supervisors. We're glad you're here and we look forward to having a productive meeting. First order of business is to call the board out of closed session. We are in closed session for the last hour and a half or so. And protocol requires that we go through a certain procedure to confirm that we're out of closed session. So I will read the motion and we'll vote on it, roll call vote. It's a certification of closed session. The following resolution is required following closed session per section 2.2 dash thirty seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia. As per the Freedom of Information Act, a roll call vote is required on this item. So here's the actual certification. Be it resolved that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements. And only such matters as were identified in the motion to go into closed session were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed session. Roll call. I move that we go out of closed session.
Second.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're back in order. Like to ask Supervisor Nicely to do the pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasure of allegiance.
Of the United States.
Thank you. Now I ask that we join in a moment of silence. Personal issue, whatever you'd like to reflect on. Personally, I feel like this is sort of the patriotic time of year between Memorial Day and the Fourth of July, and it's a good time to reflect on how fortunate we are to live in a democratic, constitutional democratic republic. I'm going to think about that and hope and ask for wisdom during today's meeting. Your, go ahead and proceed with your moment of silence and what you'd like to reflect on. Thank you. Let me introduce the board members. To your right, my left is Walter Michael. Supervisor Michael represents the Blue Ridge District. Next to Michael and to my left is Brandon Nicely. Brandon represents Ben Castle District. My far right is Dr. Max Scott-Horn. He represents Ben Cat, or excuse me, Valley. And representing Duck Island District is Amy White. So that's the board. And the first thing that we have is recognition. Chief Ferguson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. With me today, I have the lady behind the scenes that gets business going for us in the medical side of our department. And that's Dr. Carol Bernier. Dr. Bernier was recently recognized by the American Red Cross as a medical hero in the community. A nomination that we had put forward with some of our neighboring jurisdictions. And just want to take the opportunity to have her come today and be recognized. Dr. Bernier has been with us for almost 10 years now. She's been on the roller coaster ride with me of trying to get things in order over that decade. And really, all of those great examples that we bring to you throughout the years of the medical processes and procedures that save lives and add to the livelihood and health of our community could not be possible if we did not have a physician that was open minded and willing to try things and really on the front edge of EMS. And Dr. Bernier is a practicing physician at Corinne Clinic. She's also a teaching physician. So we could not be more thankful to have her in our community and part of our team.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the honor. It was quite a surprise, but this is probably a dream that I've had since I became a physician. Thirty seven years did nursing at the same time and went to medical school at forty seven years old, hoping to do something like this. And I've had the opportunity.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And Sam Lackey has an introduction to make.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm extremely excited to finally be able to introduce you to our new combination building inspector, Sam Lackey. Sam relocated from Tampa, Florida to join us in May, May ninth. Sam was born in Virginia. Worked as an inspector for an engineering firm in Williamsburg, Virginia from twenty, two thousand and five till twenty sixteen. He and his wife then moved to Florida where he worked for both Pasco County and the city of Harpon Springs in a variety of roles, including structural building inspections, both commercial and residential, and flood construction inspection from twenty sixteen until this May. He brings with him IC certifications and structural inspection and plan review. And Sam and his wife and their dog have been enjoying the Blue Ridge Parkway and the beautiful mountains and views since returning to Virginia. Sam Lackey.
Oh, welcome, Sam.
Welcome.
Thank you. It works. Thank you.
And you're going to enjoy working here. A lot of interesting projects coming up too, so you will be professionally challenged. Have you good.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a citizen comment period or items that are on the agenda. Any comments on agenda items? Well, we had, let's see. What we have here is two requests to speak, but it's not on agenda item. Not on agenda items, so we'll postpone these until the end of the meeting when we have non-agenda items comment period. Next, we have the consent agenda. The board members had a member have an opportunity to review that. And is anyone prepared to make a motion?
Some move.
Supervisor Scott Horn has moved for approval of the consent agendas. Are second.
Second.
And seconded any discussion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? That motion carries and it takes us to the next item, which is our finance director, Mr. Zerilla, and approval of transfers and additional appropriations. Tony?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and everyone in attendance. For the month of May, there are two transfer requests, one a quarterly transfer and the other a transfer of budgeted funds to assist in covering an upcoming payment to the vendor that the county is working with regarding the new payroll and human resources applications. Respect appropriation requests. There are nine passer items. And thirteen regular appropriations being requested. Passer items one through nine represent appropriations for expenditure reimbursements, contributions, miscellaneous receipts, federal state grant funding, a pass through of state grant and compensation board funds, and VDOT payments. As for the regular appropriations, which are items ten through twenty two, they are primarily a result of forecasting FY twenty four year end accrued expenditures on a department by department basis. Several of these appropriations remain necessary as the result of cost overages due to inflationary pricing combined with unanticipated additional costs not foreseen at time of the development of the FY twenty four budget. Items fourteen and twenty involve cost sharing with the federal and state government regarding Children's Services Act expenditures. Respectfully requested that these transfers and appropriations be approved by the board. Are there any questions?
Questions from board members. Is there a motion for approval of transfers and additional appropriations? I'll move that, that we approve transfers and additional appropriations. Is there a second?
Second.
It moves and seconded any discussion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Transfers and additional appropriations is approved. Next is approval of accounts payable and ratification of the short accounts payable list. Once again, Mr. Zerilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Total expenditures made request for approval for May for the general fund, including debt service and all other funds was a combined four million, two fifty five, eight fifteen seventy seven. Of this total, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars represents a transfer to the Bonita EDA for an economic development project and approximately two point four million of the combined state and local funding for the second Loomis broadband project. Other payable disbursements of note for the month are as follows. Under Animal Control, twenty six, five ninety six paid to East Coast Emergency for outfitting vehicles. Under Regional Organizations, thirty five, oh sixty two paid to Roanoke Regional Partnership for the fourth quarter member payment. Under CIP Maintenance Department, fifty one thousand dollars paid to Train Company for the Greenfield Admin Building HVAC Control Unit Project, which was completed April thirtieth. And finally, under Capital Projects Reserve Fund, seventy one thousand, five hundred dollars paid to AD duly for tree removal and roadway earthwork relating to the communication tower site for the county's Public Safety Emergency Radio System Project. Are there any questions or comments related to the accounts payable expenditure approval for the month of May?
Any questions for Mr. Zerilla? I'll entertain a motion.
Go move.
They move for approval of the additional transfers of our accounts payable and the short accounts payable list. Is there a second?
A second.
It moves and seconded discussion. All in favor of approval of the short accounts payable and if accounts payable. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Zerilla.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is information regarding the Library Foundation. And the chair recognizes Dr. Porter and Dr. Preston. Welcome, y'all.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for being willing to hear a little bit more about the foundation idea that we're working toward. I know you're familiar with the concept and we're here to just share some highlights with you, get any feedback from you, and to be sure that we're being transparent with the community about our plan for a foundation. I'm Marlene Preston and this is Brandy Porter. And we're on the library board and we've been working to bring this idea forward, but we don't want to do it without you. So we're here to chat with you about it. Also here with us is Steve Vest, our former library director. And he's also head of the Abadat Friends of the Library. And Julie Phillips is here, of course, our current library director. They both have done such an amazing job of enhancing, expanding, stabilizing our library system. And either one of them might want to jump in to clarify what we're talking about or answer questions later. We have a lot of current support for the library. I think, yeah. You, of course, are a big support. The Board of Supervisors has gone to bat for us many times and has been very generous with us. But we have other community members who also support the library. We have library volunteers, people like us who are library board members, who have a lot of friends and library members. Every person who donates a used book or buys a used book to support the friends is supporting the library. So as we talk about a foundation, we're well aware of what we already have. We don't want to duplicate that support. We don't want to silence any of that support, but we want to look for new ways to generate funds for the library. The history of this initiative, it goes back to about twenty seventeen. So it's not something that has just come up today and we, the library board has been talking about it on and off since then. Steve, do you want to make some comments about early discussions or context?
Yeah, I'll just say that the, the idea of the Library Foundation was initiated in the library board around twenty seventeen. And that one of our members who was familiar with library foundations and what they can do proposed that we have one for Bonita. So the library board approved the idea and we actually took a few initial steps, but after a while, we kind of came to a standstill. So things fell by the wayside, but now I'm delighted to see that the idea has been picked up again and wholeheartedly endorse it as the former director and hope that you will endorse it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So we were fortunate about twenty twenty two to have a couple new library board members. Brandy and also Chris Beck, who is a former library board member, who were willing to share their expertise with foundations and also willing to do the research and put in the elbow grease it was going to take for us to even come up with an idea for a structure for this kind of foundation. So they worked on an ad hoc committee and the library board has fully supported their work. And Brandy's going to talk through some of the highlights of the foundation plan. And then we'll come back and see if you have some input to share.
All right. So I wanted to give a little bit of background about library foundations. These are independent, private, nonprofit fundraising organizations and are typically created to supplement existing budgets, not to replace them. And in library world, it's quite common practice as a support mechanism for public libraries. Just in Virginia, there's quite a few in urban and rural areas and several in our surrounding area as well. So with tax exempt status, we would be able to apply for some grants that currently as a government agency, the library is not able to apply for. We would be able to take donations in kind and monetary gifts for those who want to be able to give a larger scale tax exempt donation. And it also opens up opportunities for planned giving. So one of the major benefits is this is a non-citizen tax based funding source and would hopefully allow capital projects, if we're successful, to come to fruition a little bit sooner. And foundations themselves can earn money through interest and also making investments on the monies that they've collected. So we know that a foundation takes time to build. So these are just some of the things that could happen short term to long term. First, it really just becomes a landing spot for any centralized library donations. Middle term, we could offer some small fundraising events and begin the process of engaging potential donors. And then longer term, the goal would be to apply grants and seek larger scale monetary gifts, again, most likely for capital types of projects. And this is just some research I pulled together from different library foundations of examples of types of projects that have been funded. Some go the route of programs. I don't know that the foundation would do a ton of this since we have the Friends of the Library that can already support some level of programming. But what foundations often do are these facility enhancements. So small scale from furniture to entirely new branches. And also technology enhancements might be equipment like three D printing to full scale replacement of public terminals in a library. So the proposed foundation is not intended to compete with the Friends group. That we're not intended to fund operational cost, to circumvent the library's mission or policies in any way, or to mandate any library decisions. And just a quick snapshot of how the funding would kind of come together. So currently, there's government funding through local taxes and also state funds for libraries that Baratuck County receives. We also have the Friends of the Library program. They are comprised of four individual chapters and most often raise money for local branches. And they have not done any kind of large scale fundraising. So what the foundation would do would be fill a gap by being able to accept corporate and private funds and apply for grants and the focus would be on the entire network, not just individual branches. So with all of this, there's lots the foundation can do, but the caveat is just that they do take a bit of time to build. And because the foundation would be a separate organization from the government, there are several safeguards in place to ensure alignment. So the foundation would operate in accordance with a memorandum of understanding that would need to be established between the county and the foundation. We would still, donations would still fall in line with the library gifts and donation policy. The foundation would look to strategic direction that was already set by the county and would adhere to any governing laws as well. So with us coming to today, we are hoping for general endorsement. With that, we would move forward with establishing an initial foundation board. That board would be able to finalize any bylaws and begin the process of establishing the memorandum of understanding with the county and also work through filing the various paperwork, both at the state and federal level.
Really what we're hoping for, if you have some, is that you'll share some input with us. We're not looking for a big formal document or anything. This would be an independent foundation. But if you see stumbling blocks, if you have questions or concerns, we'd like to hear them before we spend more time on this so that we could adapt, change, grow in a way that would make most sense to you. Comments, questions?
Yes, I have three.
Okay, one of us should be able to answer.
Okay, the first one, I understand that you're presenting this today as a courtesy and I appreciate you running this by us and I want to thank you for doing that. My first question was the first question was, do you know if these library foundations are being encouraged by the ALA?
I'm not aware of ALA endorsing or supporting it. I mean, ALA has resources for how to set up a foundation. Basically, the steps kind of that I have outlined in terms of applying for articles of incorporation, getting a tax ID number, those kinds of steps.
Okay, thank you. The second one is, now I'll read this. I understand that the Library Foundation will be separate from the county library system. And the funds raised will be tax deductible for the donors. In addition, that the foundation are probably more effective in doing this fundraising than our current processes as well as the processes by the Friends of the Library. But I think that we need to draw a line of demarcation so that each function knows where their part of the action is. And that way you don't have any confusion or conflicts of interest. And I just wanted to throw that out as being part of your process of putting this together. And third, I understand the foundation is currently developing your vision of activities. I believe that the Library Foundation's charter, your bylaws and your mission statement should be developed first. And that the foundation's vision that you presented at your last Board of Trustees meeting, I'm very much aligned with that. However, in our May fifteenth meeting, it seems like that was a bit far afield for my taste. And I wanted to just express that for you. So and again, that reinforces why I believe the need for the mission statement is critical and we should address that first. And I like the idea of transferring the library financial needs from the taxpayers to grants and philanthropy fundraisers and donations. I believe this would be a blessing to the homeowners and I thank you for that. Unfortunately, there's still an impact on the county budget. Let's say, for example, that the foundation did build a new library. The county then would still be responsible for getting the reference materials there, staffing it and utility costs. So
So nothing would happen. No monies would be forced upon. So nothing would happen, no monies would be forced upon the county. So at any point, you would have the opportunity to say, no, we're not going to support a new building.
Okay.
No one would be making you to do that.
All right. So in summation, I believe that the mission of the state, the mission for the library foundation, we address that to capital projects, building maintenance, and building enhancements. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So what you're seeking is endorsement. The other, the other items like Mr. Michael mentioned, bylaws and so on are forthcoming. Then they will come to the Board of Supervisors.
No, they will not. This will be a separate organization where the Board of Supervisors and the county would be involved is in establishing a memorandum of understanding that would dictate the entire relationship.
So what particular action are you seeking right now?
Just generally, if this seems like a good idea, we've spent a good bit of time since 2017. I want to keep going if, you know, there's opposition to this, so.
I was remiss on two points. First of all, I should have introduced you all. Brandy Porter, who represents the Blue Ridge District on the library board, and Marlene Preston, who is the Chair of the Library Board, she represents Amsterdam. We appreciate the work that you all do. The other way that I was remiss, I guess the best way to handle this, this is not, right now, what we're talking about is not a parent. But we do have the opportunity for citizens to speak. And as I mentioned in the beginning, I received two requests to speak, and I read them to be library, not library foundation. So I presumed that these requests to speak were relative to, I assume they were not relative to agenda items, but technically they are. So without opposition, you all, any questions from you or?
Oh, we just looking for you. You want us to stop in our tracks? We'll stop in our tracks. Otherwise, we're gonna keep moving forward. Try to set up a foundation some needs or get some funding revenue that we haven't been able to get.
We appreciate the work that you do, not only on this initiative, but the library board period. You do a magnificent job. So thank you.
And I think we.
I have a question here, if I may. Is there any other library foundations around the area?
So Roanoke City, I believe, has one, Bedford County, Franklin County. And then there are some others in southwest Virginia as well.
So I've been on the library board in Roanoke City, and there is a foundation there. And board members really didn't deal with the foundation. Board members did their own work that they'd always done, and the foundation raised money to give away free books to support certain initiatives so that, and to apply for grants, that's really the big thing that I think we're not able to do right now. Apply for grants that might involve training or kinds of things that would cost us money to do otherwise.
Would this go in and further, like scholarship funding?
Could be.
Some do. I've found where some support professional development for staff members, things like that.
So I offer a few comments. I don't want you to stop in your tracks. I support what you're doing. I've seen professionally and personally the work that foundations can do to support a body and entity, and I think there's a lot of potential here. I think, you know, concerns have come up and been discussed. I think a well-crafted memorandum of understanding, which you've alluded to a couple of times, can really make sure to delineate the role of the roles of the various bodies that are involved in this, namely the Bottotack County Library and the Board of Supervisors and this foundation. I think we can address any, any concerns at that point so that everybody knows what the rule is. I view this as a, as a way to help grow our libraries without placing a tax burden on our citizens. I support that. I think that the opportunity for grants is immense, and the opportunity for planned giving is immense. And there are two things that we really can't do with our current structure. So I support your efforts. I thank you for your efforts, and I look forward to hearing you come back with some of the, some of the artifacts that you've described and watching this process and hopefully being a partner with you through this process.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other comments, board members?
I've been a member of the Ed Foundation for probably 15 years or whatever, but it's a great thing. And I do believe that they have a very good start with y'all right now. So, you know, appreciate the presentation, and I'll be looking forward to a little more down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
As I was saying, we do have two citizens who signed up to speak on the library foundation. So I'm going to ask if they still are interested in speaking, and the first one would be Jim Luddington.
Can we get some more volume? First, July, this board, with the exception of Mr. Michael and Mr. Nicely, who were not on the board at that time, passed a resolution in support of the protection of citizens' First Amendment and parental rights in Bottotack County libraries. This resolution gave the board's approval and protection for the distribution of obscene and overtly sexual materials for our children. The efforts by parents to remove obscene books from their local libraries is now nationwide. These groups have discovered that the American Library Association is a staunch defender of placing questionable books in public libraries. And no wonder, they're funded in part by the Human Rights Campaign, a large leftist organization whose agenda includes pushing sexual perversion on children. Three of you on this board right now seem to think that's a fine idea, as shown by your vote last July. And now this has come up, this, this library foundation idea has come up, and we're concerned about that, because this will now raise money and fund library projects off-budget. Our concern is this foundation will raise money separate from county funding, independent of the Board of Supervisors. That's a concern to many families because you are elected and presumably answer to the people. But private and corporate money coming into a tightly controlled committee means our libraries will be influenced by foundations and other sources outside the county. And the proposal for this committee states that specifically, quote, "Donors may suggest, but not ultimately dictate use of funds donated," unquote. In other words, this small, independent group can do whatever they want to with the funds. If all that is correct, then that is a concern as we, the Bottotack County Republican Committee, ask you to stop this foundation, not allow it to go forward. And if that's not possible, from the sound of it, it's going to be, it's a done, it's a done deal. It's going to happen anyway. And if that's the case, we strongly object to this kind of private funding from our libraries. We appreciate the fact that it would save taxpayer dollars, but it then goes with, with the track record the libraries already have in Bottotack County, we're just concerned of where this is going to go. So I wanted to be, wanted to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luddington. Andrea Smith.
Good afternoon. I'm Andrea Smith from Troutville. I represent many conservative families who are unable to be present here today due to the working class, as well as stay-at-home parents who don't want to bring their children to hear these items that are being discussed. We have raised awareness in our community. We have spoken and shared at churches and social gatherings. The group Brace collected over 1,000 names opposing grooming and sexual perversion, along with writing newspaper articles and being on local television. We have met and we have prayed over each and every one of you, along with those opposing the word of God and the bedrock of society, the family. It's with great love, not the projected hostility, that keeps us motivated and going. Our love protects. Our love protects children, and our love protects those who are lost and hurting by gender confusion and social pressures by us sharing truth and love. We oppose the work and agenda from people who want to kill babies in the womb to those trying to make rape and sex with children legal, as pronounced by the United Nations that I shared last year. Starting out through the decentization of grooming and sexual perversion in children's books. We have shared that we love all people. We have shared that God loves all people so much that he sent his only son to die for our sins, that we would no longer be stuck in them, empty and confused, and being lost for all eternity, but instead would repent and call out to Jesus as our Lord and Savior as he has the power to change confusion and bring about the identity that he created, the identity that brings life. We have pleaded with you. We have shared exceptional research regarding the damage of mental health, spiritual health, physical health, and relational health. Yet last year, this board decided to not join us in the do no harm stance, but instead celebrated and has promoted it. For that, we are raising up leadership who can do the job. Each of you have contributed to this county in great ways in which we appreciate. However, the most important job of protecting our children has been neglected and opposed. We will not stand around and watch the destruction of our children and the family instituted by God by the hands of leadership promoting it. If God is for us, who can be against us? I plead that you join God's side, protect the children, and do no harm. God's side always wins. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have the VDOT monthly update. Mr. Blevins.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. For our monthly update, we are still working through our yearly resurfacing contracts. Don't think any have started here yet in Bottotack, but I'm sure they're headed your way. As for the traffic engineering work orders, we are still looking into the, the additional truck signage restriction in Buchanan for 43. For Route 630, Blacksburg Road, we did receive a response back on that to say that they do not feel that there's a need to change the speed limit at this time. That it should stay the way it is because we have seen good compliance and no major changes in the land use or geometry on that roadway. We're still looking at the one for Back Creek Lane. As for the one for Route 666, Lee's Gap Road, due to the very low volume on that roadway and the lack of crash history, they decided not to post that roadway with any speed limit. But what they did suggest is if there are some issues with someone's children, it looks like an autistic children sign, we do have options. There's an option for person with disability area signs, or they can actually like put signs under permit in the right-of-way through Bottotack County for watch for children signs. We do those, we do have a few of those in Roanoke County. I don't, I'm not aware of any in Bottotack, but that is a possibility as well. As far as land development projects, we have several under review. Some are, some are a little older. We're expecting, you know, some, some revisions to be sent back in. Nothing, nothing too big. We had several permits this last month, a lot of utilities and private entrances, a few special events and some commercial entrances. I'm going to skip past the residency and VDOT projects because I know that's going to take a little bit more time. As for the area headquarters and in-house projects, just typical for this time of year. As we're getting into the summer, we've started mowing. We've mowed all the, we've started mowing primaries already. We usually try to get those done before Memorial Day, which I think we have succeeded in for everywhere. We are doing secondaries now. Those take a little bit longer as we do those with our crews. Same, same with gravel roads. We're grading those, doing some patching ahead of the, ahead of the schedule work that I mentioned earlier. Some tree removal. We had some pretty good storms this weekend, so we had a few trees down in all of our areas. Luckily, we didn't get as hard as, hit as hard as some. And we're doing pipe replacements and just typical maintenance. But before I go over any of the projects, does anybody have any questions or concerns that you've received from citizens about maintenance-related items?
Board members, anything? Go ahead.
I do.
Okay, you have one?
So I, from Buchanan, I was hoping for two things. A Fringer Trail update. Do you have a timing for that project?
I don't have a timing yet. It will be done this summer. We're going to try to get it done before, before the fall ends. We're going to do a roadway in Craig County first, C.C. Mountain. We've got that one scheduled before it because it's been kind of on the plan the longest. Then we'll move the Fringer, and then we have a road in Bottotack County. I would expect sometime by maybe August, late August, because we know that we'll be moving our contractors into doing roadway projects like that sometime here pretty soon.
So one of the main concerns that we have from that road is dust. So will you be doing mitigation?
We can do dust control.
Until, so please put that to be aware of. I don't, don't want that to get neglected, knowing that the bigger project's coming, but it'll still be a problem.
Right, right. We may not do any major ditching operations or anything like that since that'll be done with the project, but we would still do typical maintenance, potholes, dust control, things like that until then.
Thank you. My second area of concern is on the gravel portion of Flowing Springs Road. I've gotten some concerns from constituents, ditches. Sometimes they seem to think the grading makes it worse as far as driving and the washboards that, that form. So if you could please take a look at Flowing Springs
Yes.
and let me know what you think, what your assessment is, and maybe we can have some conversation between you and some of the landowners that are the residents that drive that, that travel that road.
Gladly.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anything for Val?
No, just a thank you more than anything else as far as Sanderson Road. Absolutely fantastic patch repair there, areas that were definitely torn up from the pipe. I know it's a long time coming, and I'm sure you heard about it as much as we did, but they did do a very good job, from my understanding.
Very good job.
Anything else?
I wanted to give you a thank you for the trimming that you're doing on Archway Road. That'll certainly save box trucks knocking limbs off onto the paving, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
It's the time of year. Either school buses, whenever they start back, or, or the box trucks, they find the limbs before we do sometimes, but we're trying to get ahead of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So to step back to the projects.
We have a couple more.
Okay, oh, sorry.
You don't, well, I do.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Azalea Road.
Azalea.
Yeah. There's, there's interest in posting additional.
Fine lines.
Not, well, additional fines. Yeah, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Additional fines for speeding, like we did over.
On Greenfield.
Yeah. So do we need to start that process with getting citizen emails?
Probably. We probably should get some, some feedback from the citizens. We could do something a little more formal this time. With Greenfield, I knew that you, the board, had already supported it, so it's really a little bit easier, and I'm sure you support it with Azalea. But let me, let me go back and kind of round things back up with our, our traffic engineering folks to see maybe we can formalize it a little bit more this time, other than gathering it. That way it worked and it was fine, and we knew the citizens were going to be okay with it. But, you know, you, it's the one or two that don't like it are the ones you got to watch out for, so. But I can get back with you and then let you know. But you can let them know that it's something we can work on, and as long as the board and the sheriff's, sheriff's office supports it and our traffic engineering staff, I don't see any reason why it couldn't go forward. It'll just take time.
Yeah, we'll clear it with the sheriff.
Yeah.
Supposedly, it gives him something else to do. Supposedly it gives him something else to do, so.
Okay.
We need to do that. We'll get that support. The other thing, on 220, in the general area of the former Pizza Hut and Super 8 Motel 220. You with us?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I'm told, I haven't confirmed this, but I'm told that the traffic markings are pretty, are essentially gone. And you can't see, you can't tell which lane you're in and which lane you're moving into and so on. You might just check that.
Sure. We already do maintenance on those yearly. Generally, it depends on the type of markings we put down. I can see where they are on schedule. It, sometimes they'll wait if it's on a paving schedule, but I'm not aware of that section 220 being on the paving schedule for this year. So it should be something they plan on refreshing here really soon. But I'll check with our staff. We don't do it out of my office. It happens out of the district, but they certainly take suggestions, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Now you can go.
Okay. Now I can jump back. Okay. So just to start off with what I have on the agenda, we have been doing some sidewalk work in the town of Travel. That wasn't specifically what I was asked to speak about this time, but we are trying to do that, something that I promised the Travel Town Council that we work on this year with some safety funds, which is what we've been doing. But two of the things that we did that I was asked to prepare an update for was the Craig Bodatot Scenic Trail. As for that, you know, it's still moving forward through the project development process. We have been doing some, some maintenance in the area along the trail, mostly in the Craig County side. That's, that maintenance was intended to be able to get access to the old railroad bed. Some of the area was so grown up that you couldn't actually walk through it as a person without, you know, picking briars out of your face and various parts of your body, which wasn't, which wasn't comfortable. So what we've done is we've went through, cut that out. We've placed some stone down to make it easier to get in there. It's not intended to be a usable section of trail yet. It's really just there for us to get to for survey, design, drainage, evaluation, that type of thing. We are moving toward what we call PFI plans, which are preliminary field inspection plans. Those could be three to six months away, but we're, it just depends on how long it actually takes to sign and what sections we decide to focus on. And then at some point, as we promised the public during the citizens' information meetings, we will be coming back with a public hearing. We won't move too far through about 30 to 40% plans until we decide, until we actually do a public hearing. But we have to have at least portions of the environmental document approved and we have to have our, at least a good idea of what we're gonna need right of way wise. We shouldn't need a lot of right of way for the trail itself, probably just easements for construction and maintenance of drainage because the right of way is fairly wide. So the trail is pretty easy. It's just drainage that, and being able to maintain that appropriately. And then of course, if we have any parking areas that are constructed, those are most likely be off trail right of way and on something we'll have to obtain. So we'll have to have those kinda nailed down before we can go to public hearing. I don't have a real good schedule for you, unfortunately. Like I said, we're still working, working through it. You may see us out there doing some more maintenance at some point. Again, just trying to get access to the trail so we can finalize and, you know, produce a better design so we can have something better for the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions about that before I move on? Okay. The other, the other active topic, as we can see out on 220 right now, the, the intersection improvement project on Route 220, International Parkway and Ashley Way is started. They're out there today. They've got, you know, the barrels up and they're actually out there digging on the northbound side on the, on the shoulder. I saw as I was coming in. A little background on the project, some of the board members probably remember, some of them may not, that, that this project was a, an application for Smart Scale at one point. It was April-ish 2018. It was around the time that a lot of the documentation was placed, put together for the, for the application and then the sketch and several other things. And in May 16th, 2018, we did have an outreach meeting to the public. I think it was actually here. I believe it was here. Either that or the public, public hearing meeting was here later. But I attended both. But any case, that was, that gave the, the public at least what our thoughts were on moving forward. And I think it only showed the R cut, which is going in today. It was submitted sometime in the summer of 2018, scored through up until the end of 2018 and then it was voted on and approved by the CTV in early 2019 with funding being awarded in, on July 1st, 2019. Basically FY 2020. That's when it received funding. From that point forward, it went into the design process. We did have a public hearing. Couldn't find the date for that by the time I got here, but I know we had one. And it goes, like I said, it goes through the design process. There's, there's lots of chances for the public to, to comment on it. But I know there's been a lot of questions about why it couldn't have been just a signal. You know, VDOT tries really hard not to put in a full four leg, four face signal. They are generally meant to stop traffic, not to keep it moving. And on a corridor like 220, we wanna try to keep it moving. So for an R cut, if we put that in, all we, all we're really eliminating is the left turns out. That's the only thing that you can't do directly at the intersection. You can still make rights ins, rights out and lefts in. To accomplish a, what used to be a left turn, you'll make a right out, go and make a U-turn at a constructed crossover that will have adequate site distance and, and sufficient space for trucks to turn, mostly on the southern side of the intersection because that's where we expect more trucks to come from International Parkway side, not from Ashley Way. I'm sure they wouldn't really want a lot of trucks in their neighborhood. And there's been a lot of questions about why we talked about in, in some, some of it, about why we talked about signalization later. There was a little bit of a misnomer. It was a little misunderstanding as to what was intended by that is that based on the traffic study that was submitted with the, with the application for funding, it basically says that it could be signaledized in the future, but it would be a signaledized R cut. So what you do is you signalize what we build today. It would recreate what is essentially a two-phase signal. So it operates much more efficiently, similar to what's happening on Fieldstone, to where you only have to stop whenever the left turners have to come in. And those left turns can run at the same time. If you have a left turn going, wanting to go northbound into International Parkway and a left turn wanting to go southbound into Ashley Way, it can stop traffic north and south, allow them to go at the same time, then bam, they go back again. You're not waiting on side streets or left turns to make that. And even if ever the, the U-turns ever got to the point that they were a problem, you can, you can actually signalize those too and just coordinate it with the main signal if that ever came to that. But based on the traffic study that was done, there was another question about whether they took into account traffic in the park. There's a, there's a part of the study that basically says, and I can read it, it's page seven. It says, "Due to the magnitude of potential employment growth anticipated within the Greenfield site, International Parkway, future intersection traffic volumes were forecasted assuming full buildout of the Greenfield site." So full belt out of all the lots that were available at the time. If you expand it or you extend it on to 220, that could be a little different, but it at least takes that into account. And even with that, even with a full buildout, it still didn't fully warrant a signal. It only met two of the, I think it's nine warrants. And they only really checked the first three because usually those volume warrants are what we look at first. But the today's volumes of traffic, or at least the 2018 volumes of traffic, didn't meet any of the warrants. Once the full park is built out, then you'd meet two, but it still wouldn't necessarily trip a signal, at least not for VDOT. So from, from that standpoint, I can take any questions that you have or try to elaborate on anything that maybe I skipped over.
Questions from supervisors?
Thank you for, for the, for the history on that because many of us were not here at that time. But I, I would just ask, you know, it takes so long for these projects to evolve. From 2018 to 2024, we start construction. Do you feel this is still appropriate solution for this intersection? And are you comfortable with that length of time from inception to implementation? From a, from a, I know we would all like things to be quicker, but from a functional standpoint?
From an engineering standpoint, yes. The, the, the R cut has been a part of our repertoire, as it were, with VDOT for several years. Even before that, it's considered one of our go-to innovative intersections to reduce conflict points, reduce the, you know, potential of traffic impacts. And as I said, a lot of the things the concerns was, is it wasn't the fact that it was, was it appropriate to be built today? Was, would it handle the traffic today, right? Would it, did it take into account all your most recent development? And, and as, as, as the consultant rightly did, they, they took the full belt out of the park and said, this is worst case scenario. They didn't even just grow it. I assumed that they had just grown it. But what they can do is they can take the site, look at what the highest and best use of that site is, do a trip generation analysis, which is a national standard, and, and take that and say, everything goes this way. So right then, that was the only way out of the park, right? And there's, right now, there's, there's no other way, so everything goes that way. And I still think it would be a good one. And, and I think they did a very good job at, at least look into the future for the study. And I'm sure that they worked with county staff when they did that. You know, for any future plans you had coming, anything that, you know, we had seen through the land development process. But, but again, it's, it's what, if you, since it's a county park that you, you kinda helped build through funds that we had through the EDA funds. You know, like I said, we work hand in hand with that.
And this is a, a new traffic pattern that people will have to get used to using. I've, I, I work at Virginia Western, as most of you know, and we have the three roundabouts that were thrust onto Colonial Avenue. It took a lot of education to get people to understand how they work and how to use them safely and effectively. What kind of process do we embark upon to educate folks on how to use this new pattern?
I mean, our, our public outreach that we've done so far with interviews and news releases, that's usually the first step. But as the, as the project gets built, usually folks that drive this every day kinda learn it. You know, and although it's not in this, in this area particularly, it's in our district, so I have to kinda claim it as part of us. This isn't the first time this intersection's been built like this. There is one on 460 Bypass in Blacksburg at North Main Street. There is a, a R cut at an intersection that was experiencing quite a few crashes, some fatal. And it was built fairly quickly, a little quicker than this one, but it was through a compressed timeline where they did an R cut at North Main Street and they built a U-turn at either side, similar to what's happening here on a fairly high volume, high-speed road similar to this one. So it's not completely out of bounds in comparison. And to my understanding, I don't cover that area. That's covered by the Christiansburg Residences. To my understanding, it operates pretty well. But I foresee it, I perceive folks getting used to it pretty quickly, especially the folks coming in and out of here every day. The only thing, it may surprise some folks is if it's somebody that doesn't visit here too often or somebody fairly new. But North Carolina, South Carolina, a lot of the, you know, the states up and down the eastern seaboard use this on high-volume primary facilities. I've driven through them myself in, in and out of, say, South Carolina, headed to Myrtle Beach. They use quite a few of them. It actually functions pretty well. I, I think, think that folks will, once they get used to it, I think it'll, it'll be pretty good. Sort of like the roundabouts. It's, it's, it's a pretty good intersection. It functions pretty quickly.
I do hope we can use some educational material
Of course.
to help people understand how to use it. We, we had a lot of education involved in, in teaching of how to use those, so.
Roundabouts.
I want to help people know how to navigate it safely.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think, I think the only thing I'm worried about is the U-turns with tractor trailers going up and turning on 220. That's certainly concerning if, you know, taking a big truck over there and doing a U-turn.
There's gonna be some widening. It's not gonna be as big as what you'd see at some R cuts. Some of them they call loons, where you actually have to create a large, like almost half cul-de-sac on the opposite side of the road for them to be able to do it. But luckily 220 was already fairly wide there. So there is gonna be some widening that will accommodate most trucks. It, and they do take that into account when they look at site distance. Trucks move slower. They turn slower. So that is taken into account and U-turns actually have some of the highest site distance requirements that we have as far as a commercial movement for any type of intersection. It's one of the projects we're going through right now. One of the ideas we had about an R cut wouldn't work simply because it couldn't, couldn't meet the site distance requirements, so.
Thank you.
Anything else from board members? Thank you, Mr. Blevins.
Thank you.
We're gonna step back and catch up with a public hearing that was scheduled for 2:45. And this is in the hands of Mr. David Mormon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have before you a resolution to authorize pay bonuses for employees of the Department of Social Services. Bonuses were approved by the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Bodatot County Social Services Board for certain employees. And because compensation for those departments is matched with local dollars, approximately 15% is a local match. Your authorization to fund local dollars in support of these bonuses is requested today. Just a general summary, the bonuses would be distributed as follows. Employees with at least half a year, but no more than four years service would receive, the, the local match would be $30. Employees with five years to eight years of service would be $45. Employees with nine to 12 years of service would be $60 each. And employees with at least 13 years would be a local match of $75 each. I'd be happy to try to address any questions you may have, but if you would see fit to hold a public hearing on this, that's required by state code. The ordinance has been prepared by a legal counsel and appreciate his assistance in doing that. And then following a public hearing, if you would see fit to adopt the resolution and ordinance, would, thank you very much.
Okay, any comments or questions from board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and can you give me an example? I've been here for 13 years and I'm getting it $75?
So $75 would be the local match. The total would be about $500 if I, if my math is correct. So the total dollar bonuses would range from $200 to $500. Thank you.
Can you tell us again what the rationale is here?
I'm not sure I can speak to the rationale other than the, the Commonwealth and the Social Services Board feels like compensation for those social workers is, is pretty low and just a way for them to try to encourage and incentivize and retain employees in, in those positions.
Is this an annual opportunity?
This is the, the first time that this request has come to us. This is a one-time approval. Legal counsel can correct me, but I believe if they would request this in the future, it would require an additional resolution by the board.
One-time bonuses always require an ordinance.
Yeah.
Questions from board members before I open the public hearing? Hey, I'll open the public hearing and ask for any questions or comments from the public. I'll close the public hearing and proceed with discussion among board members.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think this is a good idea, but I, I also think that, you know, this is an area of need. We certainly need a lot of, and I know, Mr. Michael, you've sit on this board as well. And I would vent the fact of, in the future, what else can we do? These individuals are, are really working hard to try to, try to make everything right with the, the citizens in our area. Very difficult setting. And so I definitely am for this and like to see this happen. I'd like to see other ways that we could help out as well.
Like to see.
Other ways we can help out as well.
Okay, any other comments?
I have a comment. I was gonna hold this to the end on supervisor's comment, but whenever I first got on the Social Services Committee, this was brought up and I initially thought it was just as a point of information. And then I found out that this had been intended as the employee's Christmas bonus. And the process, I guess, the Social Services Board was not aware of the process that had to go before the bonuses could be issued. The chairman of the, the Social Services Board had already put out greeting notes. She hadn't given them to the people, but she had written them, so that was all in place. And then we came to the realization this wasn't something we can just do out of our own accord. And I have to thank our legal counsel, Mr. Lockerbie, because And I have to thank our legal counsel, Mr. Lockerbie, because this came from left field at you. And I know you spent a lot of time and effort to to get this to come to completion. And also Lori Best, we've put a lot of pressure on you. I know I've come into your office and I haven't said anything, and you give me your smile and said, we're working on it. So I just want everybody to know that this took a lot of effort. And as Mr. Scott Horn said, you know, this is something I think we should do. So I encourage you all to to pass this legislation. Thank you.
Brandon, anything? Okay. Heard our our comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Live to approve.
Second.
We moved and seconded that we approved the bonuses for social services. Any discussion? Call in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Call opposed. That is approved. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mormon. We have Mr. John Hall here, Roanoke Regional Partnership Manual Presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. And members of the of the board. It's a real pleasure to join you this afternoon and present to you the results of our work last year in 2023, which is, I think, coming up momentarily. It was, in fact, a record year in many respects for the Roanoke region. And I'm happy to share those results, and I'm thankful for your support because without your support and your partnership, these results are not possible. So. Thank you. But before we get into full swing, I just want to share some some background on the Roanoke Regional Partnership. It is a public-private partnership established in 1983, $1.6 million budget annually. Every dollar that comes in from the public sector is matched by a dollar from the private sector. We have strong private sector support. And the private sector is fully bought in. Our team is nine employees strong. We have a 37-member Board of Directors. We use twice a year and a 17-member Executive Committee. And of course, Bodotot County is represented on the Board of Directors and also, of course, the Executive Committee. The partnership does serve eight local governments. Those are the local governments shown on the screen in light green. Allegheny County, City of Covington, Bodotot County, Roanoke County, Cities of Roanoke and Salem, Town of Vinton in Franklin County. The other localities you see in the darker green are what we call our Labor's raw area. So when we're marketing the Roanoke region, we're marketing what is a reasonable commute shed for labor, but also from higher education standpoints. In other words, we include the assets of Virginia Tech, certainly, like in our marketing message. Again, this is a partnership between local governments, private sector leadership, and a regional team that can pull together for great success, and the team is is working quite well. We work on a daily basis with your staff. We're an extension of your team. We do have four strategic priorities, which came out of our Thrive 2027 Strategic Plan, which was developed again by the public and private sector leadership of this region. I'm going to give you an update, really essentially on all four of these areas, more or less in order. We're going to deviate a little bit from the screen. Economic growth, innovation, placemaking second, then we're going to go into talent, and then lastly, in commercial, real estate, and infrastructure. In regards to the business investment, Economic Growth Innovation Program of Work is our first strategic priority area that we're going to present on. In terms of the annual economic impact of projects announced, it was a record year at $387 million economic impact. This is easily the double double the economic impact of several recent years. This this figure represents a project's contribution to the region's gross metropolitan product. Okay, that's the value of all goods and services produced. It encompasses the activity of the new company or expansion, its purchases from regional suppliers, and the spending of wages by its employees on goods and services throughout the region. Also, a record was the job creation, 1,439 jobs announced with seven different companies. These seven companies are investing $145 million in capital, new capital investment, real estate improvements, intangible taxable property. The project successes include Wells Fargo, STS Group, Lehman Distributing, Altech Expansion here in Bodotot County, Wabtec, Graham White, New Belgium, and Eldor Corporation. Those final two, of course, also in Bodotot County. Partnership saw a record number of business inquiries in 2023, the highest level of opportunity for the region seen in recent years. 476 business inquiries. I'm going to break that down into a little bit further for you. The 476 represents a total of inquiries, projects, and prospects. So inquiries are the top of the funnel. It's an initial conversation. It hasn't yet yielded anticipated job creation or investment. It's, you know, very, it's very early on. But our projects and prospects come from those inquiries. A project is when we know the sector, we know the anticipated investment, we know the anticipated employment creation. A prospect is when one of the foregoing has visited to to tour real estate. And the VEDP, so those those three numbers are mutually exclusive, and you can add them together. Again, that's how you get to 476. VEDP is a is an amalgamation, a total of all the foregoing that have that resulted from our partnership with the state, Virginia Economic Development Partnership. And you'll notice that the vast majority of activity is generated by the Roanoke Regional Partnership, but we do we do receive a a large number of of impactful opportunities from the state. And the overall trend here, I went all the way back to pre-pandemic times, is one of really significant growth. So our projects and prospects are more than double. Our inquiries are higher, and even our VEDP number, our partnership with with the state is is stronger than ever. And so we're a strong level of of opportunities being delivered. In fact, you might say it's the strongest level of opportunity ever for the Roanoke region.
How did you define prospects? Can you say that again?
Prospects is when one of the foregoing visits, they touch, they touch the ground. They they tour sometimes multiple localities, sometimes one locality. They visit real estate. They meet the local government administrator or city manager. That 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 is how we define a prospect.
And and then excuse me for asking questions in the middle of your presentation, though.
No problem.
This is just kind of kind of basic. Where is the final close? It's it's not among these four?
That would be the, that's what we closed last year.
Jobs, okay.
Well, seven, seven companies expanded or or new locations.
Okay.
Mm hmm. Yep. And many of these, some of these are still active, right? So it's a long sales cycle, since in in some cases, multiple years to get to closure. Projects and prospects are up 133% from 2019. Again, that's projects and prospects being sort of the middle to late term opportunity, more than double what they were in pre-pandemic times. We also did host for the first time a site consultant fam tour. It's not for the first time, and technically, we've done this with the state before, but it's the first time the partnership did it just for the for the Roanoke region. It was dedicated to our region. Had a three-day tour of five nationally recognized site consultants visited us here, touched on eight localities, countless insights and opportunities toured through the Bodotot Center in Greenfield as well. Consultants met with Mr. LaRue and Mr. McFadden, had a program throughout the region, and we've already seen opportunities generated from that. We did have, the consultants did share with us countless insights, which were incorporated into the program of work. Jason Elkubie of VEDP moderated a panel discussion. The partnership between our region and and state economic development, as I said, is quite strong. And these consultants were impressed not only with our region as value proposition, but by the strong partnerships that exist here. And I should hit on that again, because the partnership alone does not close the opportunities, right? We we close opportunities only in conjunction with our local government partners. The partnership doesn't own, control, real estate, or incentives, right? And so it's only by virtue of a strong partners partnership with local government that we are successful. Moving to the next strategic action bucket, is that a placemaking? And I'm sharing here in the placemaking sphere, attendees of our brand building events. These events, by the way, are self-supporting by way of sponsorships and or event revenue, not through the contribution of of public members or investors. That attendance level is up 26%. That's a growing regional impact and growing regional image. The Roanoke outside contributed, in addition to the $387 million from business investment, an additional $3.6 million of regional economic impact. And a big boost to brand exposure. That figure, by the way, does not include any sort of purported marketing value that is strict visitor spending on lodging, dining, and those type of things. We don't claim to purport a marketing value. Blue Ridge Marathon is a marquee event for the region. Over half the running field comes from out of town. More than 3,000 runners represent 5% increase. A new challenge, which we call the Full Goat, is a way for double marathoners to bundle additional distances virtually to complete the full gamut of race distances. This event resulted in $1.2 million in spending. GoCross is a cyclocross challenge that's put the region on the map in new ways. Racers, over 920 racers, $414,000 in spending. And the event was livestreamed in 20 languages for Discovery Plus, Eurosport, and the Global Cycling Network for global exposure to 100,000 impressions a day. And GoFest saw an annual record attendance and an increase, $2 million in spending and impact, and a major partnership effort with the city of Roanoke, who helps us produce that event. Just to kind of put a fine point on that, those events are huge contributors to our regional brand. We we have essentially very little to no advertising budget. And so the media that we've earned through Outside Magazine and Men's Journal along the outdoor recreation is all earned media, and it's given us huge exposure. And our business prospects see great value as well in understanding how the outside contributes to talent recruitment. Speaking of talent, our third strategic priority, our Talent Solutions Program found its stride this year, and it's a program that now contributes to announce business expansion success. Business expansions were closed in part because of Talent Solutions. Our staff worked with the Workforce Development Board and other community college and other partners to propose custom employer resources to each to to some of the expansion projects that were key for local management to present to their to their reports, to to those they report to, and 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 making the sale for the local expansion. We had an intern and early career expo connecting 45 employers with 170 students. Produced new lifestyle guides. We have a new talent portal and website, a new regional jobs board, and a new regional events calendar. Hosted 570 at Quarterly Socials. We launched a summer program called Onboard ROA for interns and early career professionals, and recruited 26 talent ambassadors who represent diverse communities, diverse industries throughout the region, including, of course, Bodotot County, to to tell the story of what makes the region and Bodotot County specifically a great place to live, work, and play. The Quarterly Socials are providing opportunities for Roanoke region professionals to connect in an attractive setting. YPs, early career, connecting with employers, finding a job, finding a career, and a connection in the region. Of course, our website is continuing to reach an audience of companies and decision makers. The results, I think, speak for themselves there, but we do have some some numbers on website visits, social media following, and email list, all of which are at record levels. And the fourth and final strategic priority is that of real estate. The partnership supported several funding applications to the state and the federal government. Last year, the region's local government secured 3.8 million in state funding and $820,000 in federal funds. More recently, the partnership has has supported Bodotot County in efforts related to grant applications to the Bodotot Center in Greenfield, which are still pending. And the partnership has funded work to identify the next generation of sites. Once the product that we have now is fully committed, we do have a game play, a game plan, so to speak, to identify the next generation of site opportunities. And we have some significant ones, game changers for our economy. Finally, want to point out that as thought leaders for our community, and you are that, we do make available to you all of our data and information resources. These are resources we have to have to respond to our clients, those companies that are evaluating the region. And so when it comes to migration, workforce, GDP, housing numbers, our staff has the technology know-how, I think actually more than something like 40 years of experience combined in providing information and data. And this information and data is not available, not just to our clients, but to you as our investors and partners, Bodotot County, to your staff, and of course, to you. So please let us know how we can help. We are always eager to assist. With that, these outcomes, again, are only possible through your support and partnership on a day-to-day basis. We cannot do this work without you. I we are the Board of Directors, and of course, the executive leadership is immensely grateful to all of you. And I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for not only this presentation, but for the support that your organization has provided, Bodotot, especially, like you mentioned, site development, that's been huge for us. But it's a good place to put your money too in Bodotot, so good choice. Questions from board members?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I I have a couple.
Okay.
I think in the middle of your your presentation, you did touch on this. I'm not sure. How do you define economic to economic impact?
Sure.
Is it direct or is it total?
It it consists of three elements, okay, economic impact. So for instance, direct would be the activity at the company itself. It's it's contribution by way of the products it sells and the wealth it generates to the community. That's the first part. The second part is called indirect, and that is that represents the purchases made by the company in in the larger region with suppliers and others that that are known industries that that are impacted, right? So you bring in a transportation-related manufacturer. They're going to purchase certain metals and and components. They're going to purchase utilities, right, and other things as well. So that's your indirect impact. Indirect, induced would be the third element, and that is the spending of employees, those wages generated through that through that activity. You know, Altech sells a product outside of this region. Wealth comes into the region, is redistributed through wages, and those wages are spent at coffee shops, sandwich shops, rent, utilities, and so forth, housing. And the induced category contains that element. And so it's those three categories combined that represent the economic impact of a project.
It's pretty tight then. Spending by employees, is that what you said?
Yes, of the new wages. Mm hmm. Yep.
How did your your site consultant event, did that meet expectations?
I'm I'm sorry.
Your site consultant event where you brought them in?
Yes, sir.
Did that meet your expectations?
Yes, we've already generated opportunities off of it. We've had a couple of projects generated. It's a really excellent opportunity, right, to bring in a site consultant. We're always on the road, meeting with them on the road, to bring some of those that maybe haven't been exposed to to Roanoke through a project is is a great opportunity to to raise visibility. It's a relationship business, economic development with the site consultants. We've seen that pay dividends throughout the years. We, so one of those consultants brought us that Wells Fargo expansion, which was a record project, but actually had not ever set foot in Roanoke. Okay, and so Mr. Brian Cord, and he he left saying that he's going to bring some industrial requirements as well, because they have an industrial side of the business. Also, it was a really excellent opportunity for our leadership to hear from the consultants. Mr. Cord laid out a brilliant decision rationale behind the Wells Fargo project that really highlighted the importance of placemaking and livability. Mr. Cord said that Wells Fargo had comfort investing in the region. Mr. Cord said that Wells Fargo had comfort investing in the region because Gen Z is understood by his client to prefer low to no cost recreation. And outdoor recreation and the ease of living was really important to that company in making the decision. So all in all, it was an excellent exchange of information to our leadership, but also to the consultants. And it has yielded success already.
Good. Two, two more questions here. One of your last slides had a number of bullets and two of those bullets, they weren't next to one another, but in the same list, migration and demographics.
Yes, sir.
Which kind of rang a bell. Is that, um, that was reported a couple of years ago for the region that our in-migration basically exceeds our out-migration, including birth rates and, and people moving in and so on. Do you track that or is it?
We, we do, um, we do. I mean, we, we track the fine work of Welding Cooper Center and others, other sources, IRS migration numbers and so forth. And we amalgamate that information and report it out. It is true, Mr. Clinton, that our migration is positive. Without positive migration, this region would be in demographic decline. And so, uh, in fact, you might say that we're the, I think it's the third lar, uh, most positive, fastest in migration, growing market in, in Virginia. Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads are exporting talent right now on a net basis and we are importing it. It's all very positive.
Yeah, that's really good news.
Yes, sir.
Then one final operational question. How do you coordinate with VBR?
Oh, yes, certainly. That's a great question. In fact, I just met with Mr. Howard today for lunch. And we're talking about some strategic planning that we might do together in, in some way. Details to be ironed out. But we do, we do work closely with VBR. VBR supports some of our events as a sponsor. We do work with, with VBR on coordination of, of message as well. And we share some, some digital assets, marketing assets. And I think there's opportunity to work more closely together. And some of the strategic planning we're talking about is going to address that. So we're, we're looking to, uh, to really maximize the potential there.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else from board members? Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Go to our number 11, 4H update, Mr. Painter.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having us here today. And I say us because I brought a friend with me and I'll introduce her in just a few moments. Just want to share a quick programmatic update with you all in regards to what Bodatot County 4H has been up to. So over the last, um, since the start of the 4H year, which was October 1st, we've worked with approximately 1,350 through, um, our community clubs as well as our in-school programming. We have nine active community clubs right now that include shooting education, teen leadership, livestock, horse and pony, horse and pony clover buds, our four honey club. And then we have two robotics clubs, our FRC and FLL, which are first robotics and then first Lego League. And then our cooking club got restarted back at the end of last year in the fall of 2023. So that was one of the COVID casualties that we had, but it's back and it's, it's pretty strong. So we're really excited about that. In addition to our, our clubs, we've had several club members who've participated in a variety of competitions across the state. Those clubs include livestock, horse and pony, shooting education and our FRC robotics team, our, our high school age team. Back in October. Oh, excuse me, let me back up for a second. I just want to say this would not all be, this would not be possible without the commitment of our volunteers, our members and their families. We had our 4H achievement night back in November of last year. It was the third annual. We had nearly 100 people in attendance and we recognized so many 4Hers that night. And that attendance has grown from the first year that we did it. Three years ago, we had 28 people in attendance. And now we're, we're, we're getting up into the triple digits. So we, we hope that that will continue to grow. Back in April, we had our county 4H presentation contest. And we had, um, fourth and fifth grade students that had qualified for dramatic reading or how-to presentations through the classroom. We invited approximately 110 students, 63 of which showed up. And I've actually seen a couple of my friends back here towards the top that were, uh, in, uh, that had participated with that. We participated in a variety of community events over the last year. That includes the Bodatot County Fair, the Eagle Rock Elementary School Fall Festival, Bodatot Career Summit for seniors, um, for the high school seniors, Eagle Rock Science Festival, the Youth Day at the YMCA and, and much, much more. And I do just want to lead into our school programming update and say that this has been our best year of 4H in school programming in the five years that I've been here. Largely in part, we were in all 31 fourth and fifth grade classrooms from October to May, or excuse me, October to April. So that's over 600 kids that are impacted per month for 4H programming. We've also expanded our embryology program and that impacted over 400 students this year through fourth, fifth and kindergarten. We did some kindergarten classrooms this year, which is a lot of fun because, uh, it's a different group that I'm used to working with. And it's, it's funny because a lot of the times when I would say, okay, who has a question? And they'd say, Mr. Painter, I have a question. I'd say, well, what's your question? They say, I have a dog. Okay, all right, moving on. But, uh, let me, let me just say that what better way to teach the life cycle than hatching chicks? Um, and we actually had some turkeys as well at, at one of our schools. And like I said, we, we impacted over 400 students. I had about 250 eggs that were donated by a local family, the Moulton family. And the, that partnership came about, they are a 4H family. But we were doing an embryology project at Breckenridge in the fall. They came in and saw the kids' excitement when, um, the hatching was occurring. And they said, Tyler, we want to provide you with eggs for whatever you need. So it's been, been an awesome experience. We've continued our after-school partnership with Buchanan Elementary Science Club. That's for fourth and fifth graders. We had two successful reality store programs for our eighth grade students at CAMHS in Reed Mountain. In addition, we've worked with over 150 students in the agricultural classes at Lord Bodatot and James River for career development, which includes resume writing, mock interviews and other career preparedness activities. Our end of the year teacher survey has closed and we had exceptional feedback for this year on the impact of our 4H programming. And so with our successes in the school, I have to give a thank you to the school board. Dr. Russ, our principals, our teachers, students and parents for a very successful year. It would not have been possible without their support as well as the support of you all, which we're very appreciative of. And, uh, like I said before, I see several familiar faces from, uh, our programming in schools. So thank you all for coming today. And if you'd like to hear more about what we've got going on in the schools, I encourage you all to reach out to, uh, school board members, our principals, our teachers and even, even some students. So, um, what's going on now? We're in active camp preparation mode. It's hard to believe that here we are again. Summer camp is right around the corner, three weeks away. We'll be camping June 17th through the 21st. We currently have, um, approximately 125 campers, teens and adult volunteers that'll be camping with us. We are in a new cluster this year. We'll be camping with Craig and Giles Counties. So that, that always presents a, a new opportunity. When, when you're camping with, with folks you're not used to, but hey, it's fine. We've got participation in future events such as Boko Wild, the Bodatot County Fair, as well as the Honey Festival, among others. We will continue to help with the annual Youth with Character Academy this summer, which will be in the middle of July. And then as I start to wrap up my piece, I just want to say again, thank you all for your support of our programs and our initiatives. And again, I, I encourage you all to reach out to me if you have any questions or comments about the overall 4H program, because I, I love to talk about it. So, um, anyway, enough about me. I have a special young lady here with us this afternoon. I'd like to introduce you all to Ms. Ashley Wilmor. Ashley is a 4H member. She's very active in our horse and pony club and current president, right? Last, what, 20 years you've been the president? She's been, yeah, she's been president of our club now for a little while. And, um, she's been very successful locally, across the state and as well in national competition, which I'm not going to spoil it. I think it's going to sound a lot better coming from her. So I'd like to introduce you all and welcome Ashley Wilmor.
Hi, Ashley.
Hi. I have been a part of the Bodatot County Horse and Pony Club for seven years. This has very much shaped me as a person, as I have always loved horses and this helped expand my knowledge of them. I also have enjoyed being able to utilize things that I've learned from my biology class to help me succeed in hippology competitions. Even though I love hippology, I enjoy horse judging even more. Horse judging I have learned from reasons for public speaking as I ended up placing second at Eastern Nationals last year. I have been on this team for two years. I have made so many friends and I've loved recognizing them and talking to them at other competitions later on in my career. I want to thank Tyler for always supporting us and being there throughout my many years. I also want to thank my leader in 4H, Stacy Collins, as well as our co-leader Mallory Dennison, for always supporting me throughout this journey and promoting my curiosity and successes. I have also loved the fact that the state show has been around for me, being able to learn more about my horse and the care that she needs through doing the Project Horse Book, as well as being able to show what we can do in a kind setting that wants everyone to succeed. I also want to thank you guys for listening to me today. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ashley.
I've enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Ashley, you, you don't get off that easy. Get back up here. You come up here, you gotta answer questions, right? Tell us all, for those who might not know, what is hippology?
Hippology is the study of horses going from diseases to their anatomy, their hoof care, maybe their even forages, what they eat and need to survive. Long words. Any other questions?
I'll say your, uh, public speaking classes have produced a great product, great, great presentation.
Thank you so much.
Anything else from board members?
I, I think your horses have, or your horse has maybe had some health challenges. You've learned to, to work through that?
Yes, um, my horse came in late August with a puncture wound on her leg. And she was on and off work and had some surgeries at tech. And we started doing his stuff again in November and then she decided to jump a fence and stitches in her knee. But now we are back to where we were doing novice venting. And actually this weekend, I'm going down to North Carolina for a horse trial with her.
Fantastic.
Wow.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tyler, would you want to introduce your?
Bring the others up here.
Absolutely. So we have some representation from Colonial Elementary School.
Let them come down here.
We have Mrs. Quezenberry, Ms. Riggs and a couple of friends. And while they're making their way down here, I just want to publicly say that I, I don't know whether to thank Ashley or to be upset with her because she and the rest of the horse club, um, did a one-day camp back in August for people that hadn't been involved in our club before. And their goal was to get me on the horse. And they did. And pictures were taken. And my two and a half-year-old now keeps asking when she gets to meet that horse. So again, I don't know whether to thank Ashley or to be upset because I feel like that's going to be a long and expensive future. But hey, if she wants to get into it, that's great. But, uh, anyway. It's Quezenberry.
How long did he stay on?
Hello, um, my name is Sarah Quezenberry and I teach at Colonial Elementary. And these fine ladies have told me that I need to go first. So I am speaking on behalf of the 4H program and how beneficial it is to maintain in our schools. The 4H program spearheaded by Mr. Tyler Painter represents a significant asset provided by our county to our elementary students. The program's hallmark lies in its immersive, hands-on approach, which infuses each lesson with invaluable practical applications. Whether constructing food webs with yarn or index cards utilizing a giant map of Virginia to trace the origins of local products. Students are offered engaging learning experiences that resonate long after the classroom, classroom sessions. Mr. Painter's leadership in delivering 4H programs at Colonial Elementary has profound impacts on students in grades three through five. Through crafted activities and projects, students not only absorb scientific principles, but also apply critical thinking abilities, which creates such an enthusiasm for learning. It's technology, new graphic games, social media and so much more that educators compete against. And as a fourth grade teacher, I have less than five minutes to hook my students on lessons before they lose interest due to their attention span. However, when Mr. Painter, Painter steps into my classroom, my students' eagerness for his visits underscores the program's efficiency in maintaining high levels of student engagement and facilitating a memorable and enriching educational experience, something that's not offered online. Furthermore, the program's reach extends beyond the confines of the classroom and reaching the broader community by instilling a culture of lifelong learning and fostering essential life skills like social interaction. In light of challenges surrounding the social skills amongst students, Mr. Painter's approach, particularly his incorporation of dramatic readings, serves as a commendable, commendable intervention. By encouraging students to interact with tangible literacy materials and fostering dialogue, the program effectively eliminates screen time and promotes meaningful, familiar engagement. Each lesson under Mr. Painter's guidance is designed to be hands-on, helping students with motor skills, which also increase due to gaming systems. The impact of Mr. Painter's 4H program transcends individual student experiences, contributing positively to the community as a whole. By prioritizing experiential learning and interpersonal interaction, the program not only equips students within the community, but Bodatot County also takes great pride in our students and schools. However, with the rapid advancements in technology, we've noticed a decline in students' empathy and social skills. Programs like this are crucial for providing classroom teachers like myself with that missing piece of the puzzle. They enable students to forge meaningful connections and promote positive social interactions. So we hope we maintain this program. It's a huge bene, huge benefit to us. Thank you, Mr. Painter.
Thank you. Go ahead. Please.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Milkow. I'm a rising fifth grader at Colonial Elementary. And I just want to tell you how much Mr. Painter has had an impact on me. Every month, we know that Mr. Painter is going to come and he is going to teach us something. And we know it will be a fun lesson and it's not just going to be one that we forget. Last year, after I saw my sister go to 4H camp, the year before, I really wanted to go. But I was nervous because I didn't know anybody going and I'd never been before. But I knew how great the 4H program was and how great Mr. Painter was. So I decided to go. Instantly, I made so many new friends and I had so much fun thanks to how great the opportunity was. When I went and did dramatic reading, it helped me learn how to have more confidence when I'm speaking and just in general. Honestly, if I didn't do that, I probably wouldn't be up here today talking to you. And I just want to say, I hope that so many other students get to have the same opportunities as me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Charlie Woody and I'm a rising fifth grader at Colonial Elementary. Mr. Painter has helped me so much through the years with my sister. I've heard so many fun stories and I was ready to go. Three years ago, I watched my older sister prepare for dramatic reading programs sponsored by the 4H program through my school. It was something I could not wait to do. It was something that I put out. It was something that I put out of people's comfort zones and it was really exciting to try new things. It wasn't just did technology on stuff and doing notes. It was hands-on experiences that we'll never forget. Mr. Painter has helped us so much through the years and I will hope other people will get to have him. He explores all new interests and I hope I can find more that I never thought I'd find.
Very good. Thank you very much. 4H, some of the words I heard from you all are friends, fun, adventure, experience, education, all those things. That's what 4H brings. And you all are great representatives of 4H.
Yes, you are.
Appreciate you being here.
Especially, you're out of school now, right? So you cared enough about this to come in here on your summer break and talk to us. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for sharing. What's your favorite 4H activity so far? Dramatic reading? Yeah, both of you? That's wonderful. Stick with it. That's great. It's paying off, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Tyler. Anybody in favor of a quick break? Want to keep going? I didn't hear anything, anybody say yes, so we'll keep going.
Before Ashley leaves, I'm just going to say that's the first time I've ever, I've been involved with 4H a long time. First time I've ever heard anyone applaud the project book. So thank you. That keeps us going, right? There you go. Wonderful lesson there. Thank you.
Let's move on to number 13, consideration of a resolution requesting that two streets, namely Boxwood Lane and Shenandoah Avenue in Daleville Town Center be taken into the VDOT secondary system. For Baker.
Well, first off, what a tough act to follow. I was kind of hoping we would take a break, but that's okay. For your consideration, this afternoon is a resolution requesting that two streets of the Daleville Town Center be taken into the secondary system of highways. Boxwood Lane and a section of Shenandoah Avenue in the Daleville Town Center have been reviewed and approved by VDOT and are eligible to be accepted into the state secondary system of highways. The section of Shenandoah Avenue that is part of this request is between River Birch Avenue and Boxwood Lane. So just for a little reference, the plan is for additional sections of Shenandoah to be taken into the system at a later date. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board members, seeing the resolution, is there any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved that we adopt the resolution requesting Boxwood Lane and Shenandoah Avenue to be brought into the VDOT secondary system. That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that action is taken. Item number 14, update on Apex Rocky Forge Project. Mr. McCoy, there he is.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Two months ago, I came and gave you a very brief and hopefully enjoyable update on the Rocky Forge project that's going on. Today, I have an equally brief, maybe not as enjoyable presentation for you all. County staff and VDOT continue to meet with Apex representatives to receive updates and discuss outstanding Platte and Plan Review items. The company continues to work on outstanding items and updating studies, but do not have an estimated timeline for recent middle as of this report. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have, offer you a polite and friendly nod, and will pass those questions along to the people who are more intelligent than I to answer those.
Any questions? Thank you for the monthly report.
Absolutely, sir.
Item number 15 has to do with a public hearing. Just authorize a public hearing on amendments to the Bodotac County Code, Chapter 20, Article Four Litter Control. And once again, Mr. McCoy, it's yours.
Good afternoon again. So the crux of this item here before you today is just to clear up some responsibilities and roles for who will handle grass weeds and litter control here in the, in Bodotac County. This is just something that we're working with our legal counsel to make sure that the roles are explicitly known to all in the public and make sure that our code sections are clear to ensure that we are given the appropriate responsibility to actually enforce the weed and grass complaints that we received to our department, namely this time of year, but throughout the summer as well. So we ask you all to go ahead and advertise amendments to this piece of the county code and just make sure that we're given the appropriate authority to actually enforce grass and weed complaints.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. I will move for approval to advertise a public hearing. It's our second?
Second.
All in favor indicate, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Got that one. And the next one is also Mr. McCoy. No, it's not. Yeah, no, it's not. Authorize, this is Mr. Bowles, authorization to advertise a public hearing on amendments to Bodotac County Code, Chapter 10, Erosion and Sediment Control. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon again. Basically, the General Assembly has directed the DEQ to update our, or their stormwater management and erosion sediment control to a model ordinance that combines the two together. It's been a long time coming. It's something that we're regulated to do and it's got to be done by July 1st. And what we're asking is that you authorize and direct the clerk to advertise amendments to Chapter 10 in accordance with the law for public hearing and consideration at the Board's June meeting. Happy to answer any questions if I can.
Erosion sediment control becomes bigger every year with more rain and more developments.
Yes, sir.
Important issue.
And the erosion sediment control is the, is the measures that are in place during construction, while a project's going on. Stormwater management works more with the long-term, provides some permanent facilities to maintain a runoff that is as close as possible to the pre-development runoff.
Well, this address community organizations like subdivision.
It, well, the whole program, it'll involve from single-family residents. So they're required to do some erosion sediment control while under construction. All the projects have some sort of erosion sediment control. The stormwater management part of it, there's a, at about an acre of disturbed land, there's some other regulations that kicks in. And currently, some of those, by them being two separate entities, they are redundant. So this will combine it all together and it'll help hopefully clarify it for implementing them and maintaining them.
Any impact on HOAs?
I don't, I think the HOA, I would defer to Mr. Lockaby for that, but I don't think they have.
Okay. Wish could use some updating, in my opinion. Hey, thank you, Mr. Bowles. Any questions from board members? And the action before us is advertise a public hearing, approve the advertising of a public hearing for the amendment of the code.
Yeah, motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's my.
Is it going to make it any easier? Is it going to make it any easier?
We have four appointments. Three of them are the Building Code Board of Appeals. Mark Dunbar, from an alternate member to a full member to fulfill the term of Gary Grodny's. This term will expire on March 17, 2026. Mark Dunbar, Building Code of Appeals. I'll move, we approve that?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mark Dunbar is hereby assigned to the Building Code Board of Appeals as a full member. Joe Thompson to replace Becky Dahl. And Joe Thompson's term will expire on March 17, 2028. I'll entertain a motion for Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, John Suppanop, General Contractor, appointed to be appointed to the Building Code of Appeals as an alternate. I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And next we have our Director of Parks and Recreation, Victor Morales, being assigned to the Roanoke Valley Greenway Commission for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2027. I'll entertain a motion for his appointment.
I'll move to approve. Second.
I hear a second?
Yes.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. I think that covers everything except citizen comment period and board member comments. So citizen comments, anything doesn't necessarily have to be on the agenda. We have one here. Or several. Okay, we just had a nice presentation from 4H. Let's take this one first, 4H in Schools. Charlie Woody and Evelyn Milco.
Mr. Painter called in the office and they are.
Okay, so you're. Okay. Without elaboration, topic is library. Sally Field.
I have a few thoughts on the idea of banning of books that a admittedly vocal minority in this county finds offensive. I personally think Stephen King is a very deeply disturbed individual and it makes me profoundly unhappy to know that some of my money has been enabling him to continue to write and live his lifestyle. I'm sure a goodly number of vegetarians consider books on animal husbandry morally depraved and seriously offensive. I have a friend who considers Barbie anathema and she is profoundly unhappy that there are a number of books featuring her available in the Bodotac County Library System. I could go on. The point I want to make, though, is that there are many ways to be, there are as many ways to be offended as there are people in this county, in this state, in this country. Who gets to defy, decide whose offense matters most? Who gets to decide what anyone else can read based on their definition of offensive? It's the Bodotac County Public Library System. Public means everyone in the county, not just some of the people in the county. If you find a book offensive, don't check it out. Don't read it. If you don't want your children to see it, police their behavior when they're in the library. It's the job and the responsibility of the parent, not the library or the county, to guide their child's choice of reading material. Thank you for listening to me.
Have one asking for commentary, asking to make commentary on school budgets, in particular 4H. Tammy Riggs and Sarah Quezenberry.
I'm on there twice because Sarah got her before I did. She thought I was going to be late. So that's Sarah. She's already gone.
Okay. Tammy Riggs, this is without further elaboration, Bodotac County Public Schools Budget. Ms. Riggs.
Good afternoon. As Principal of Colonial Elementary in Bodotac County for the last 23 years, I come before you as a committed advocate for the complete funding of our school division for the upcoming budget cycle. My dedication to public education extends far beyond a mere professional obligation. It is a deeply ingrained passion rooted in nurturing the potential of our future generations. In today's landscape marked by societal challenges, family breakdowns, and pervasive influence of technology and social media, the imperative to invest substantially in our children has never been more paramount than now. With approximately 85% of our school budget dedicated to personnel, any deficit in funding directly impacts the retention of crucial family or staff members. The multitude of challenges our students face, including trauma, social skill deficits, and developmental hurdles necessitate a fully staffed faculty. It is disheartening to witness our competitive edge and staff compensation erode, leading to the departure of talented educators seeking better opportunities elsewhere. This challenge extends far beyond the teaching staff to the essential roles such as my cafeteria manager, for example, responsible for overseeing a program to feed 480 students who struggles to make ends meet and some of the cafeteria managers even qualify for food stamps. Similarly, instructional assistants pivotal in supporting student learning receive inadequate compensation with starting wages following far below a livable standard, between $16,000 and $17,000 annually. Furthermore, as our student population needs evolve, so must our capacity to address them effectively. Additional personnel to support students with significant disabilities and challenges are not luxuries, they are necessities. The absence of these resources, such as instructional coaches, underscores the critical importance of adequately funding student-centered initiatives and programs. Moreover, the pressing need for additional classroom space at Colonial must not be overlooked. The fact that our preschool program had to be relocated to Colonial, or to Cloverdale Elementary due to space constraints underscores the urgency of this issue. That's correct. My early childhood special education students and my VPI preschool students are now taking spots away from students in Cloverdale, Breckenridge, and Troutville Attendant Zones because there's no room for them in their own school. The current overcrowding compromises, the quality of education, leaves preschool students on wait lists. Our students deserve better than makeshift solutions. We must prioritize fulfilling the original plan for the additional classrooms to ensure optimal learning environment. Just making it work should not be the standard practice in our county. Our kiddos deserve better. Our budget is meticulously crafted to prioritize the needs of our students, eliminating unnecessary expenditures in favor of investments directly benefiting their educational experience. I urge you to consider the legacy you wish to leave, an unwavering commitment to fully investing in the future of public education and all the students in Bodotac County. Let us ensure that every child has access to resources and support needed to thrive, leaving an enduring mark, your mark, on generations to come. Thank you so much for listening.
Carrie Martell for item number eight, which is elaborations.
Hello, I'm Carrie Martell in the Buchanan District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about the potential formation of a library foundation in Bodotac County. What I see happening here is the Bodotac County libraries operate a resource collection that has been paid for by the Bodotac County Commonwealth of Virginia and to a lesser extent, American taxpayers in already existent buildings paid for by taxpayers, using utilities and staff paid by taxpayers. But they want to bring in a third-party partner to secure third-party funding. As you know, as a couple of you know, at least, I've attended about four budget subcommittee meetings. So I do care about saving taxpayers money. so I do care about saving taxpayers' money. But not at the cost of children's innocence or the slide into Marxist humanism, which seems to be a growing state religion. The other side of the content issue constantly, including today, straw mans this argument as book banning when Grace and several of the other citizens have been very reasonable about, well, if you must use our tax money that we had confiscated to buy these materials we object to, at least put them in a library, in a book, in a place where children can't stumble upon them when they're browsing, their parents have to access them for the children under a certain age. It's a very reasonable compromise and it is not book banning. Okay? So what I'm seeing here is this library foundation will come in with third-party funding and they can buy any resource they want and hide behind the foundation because they're no longer accountable to the taxpayers who've made their very existence possible and pay all the enormous boring bills due, like the essential things, power, building, staff. Now the libraries can push an agenda through resources and programming and justify it with the foundation fig leaf. I strongly oppose the foundation being formed unless all activity and funding brought in is subject to voter and taxpayer restriction. The foundation slideshow says today, it's not intended to fund operational costs. It's the reading between the lines here and what's not being said that concerns me. It's a little bit like the fox guarding the hen house is what it sounds like to me. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, best I can tell, that concludes all requests to speak. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, we have, I think, two, two other items. One is board member comments and the other is something I just saw. Late breaking news, I guess. This was.
Oh, refund.
Yeah, that's what this is. Yeah, okay. This just came in as a walk-in, I'll use this. Lock on item, added to the consent agenda, two real estate tax refunds for disabled veterans. And I might ask Mr. Booth, would you elaborate on this for revenue?
So I think, let's you know, there is a real estate tax exemption at the state level. It was part of the 2011 constitutional amendment to where veterans who are 100% totally and permanently service-connected, disabled, are exempt from paying real estate tax. Oftentimes, the VA will take years after the fact to go back and declare them disabled from many years earlier. You know, they go to the VA today and were told, okay, after this long process, it's effective for years past. So for those prior years that had paid real estate taxes, just asking for those specific individuals on there to get their refund, they are beyond the $2,500 maximum limit that I have for it, so it has to go before the board for that approval.
Yeah, this is essentially a catch-up. And we have two remarks here from Mr. Lockaby. And they're both relevant, is that right?
They are. They're both relevant and, and appear to be lawful based upon the information I have. There's currently potential regulatory legislation, regulatory change that might actually broaden it slightly, but what Mr. Booth has certified is probable.
Okay. This was intended for the consent agenda, but it's broken out by circumstances. So I'll ask for a collective, both, both proposals, updating people who, disabled veterans who have refunds coming to them. Board members, have you taken a look at this at all?
Yeah.
All in favor? Let me ask someone to make a motion in favor of this.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Booth. And finally, board member comments. Anything?
I have a couple things, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the question about the library foundation, I might refer to Ms. Phillips, if you're able to answer. When we had some initial discussions, I don't think you have to come down here. I think it's quick. One of the questions came up was about acquiring material. And it is my understanding that if a foundation is established and functioning, any acquisition of material still follows through the county processes as they do today. Is that correct? So the foundation won't be purchasing new material for the library?
No, that would be considered an operational cost, so it would not be difficult for a foundation to fund. In any case, our current policy still stands, so everything runs under the same.
That's a question that, that had come up several times and I thought I was understanding that correctly. So I want to clarify that and, and get that out there. Then, just two other quick things that are, I think, positive. First, three things. I'll compliment 4H again. I don't think we can say enough about the positive youth development that that program is doing and so great to see those, those children here today exemplifying what's going on with them. Two other events I will turn our attention to. Mark your calendars. June 8th is BOCO Wild. That is, our Parks and Rec Department puts that on at Fairgrounds in Buchanan. That is generally a really fantastic event, so I encourage everybody to take a look at your calendars and, and come to Buchanan that day if you can. And speaking of Buchanan, June 27th through July 6th is what? The carnival. So there is a lot of opportunity there for fun, for great food, and for volunteer time if you're so inclined. They need lots of people in the various food stands and ice cream stands. So if you want to get involved in that community, please come down and enjoy that. But thanks, everybody, for your time and input today.
Thank you. Ms. White. Speaking of dates, Mr. Rue, would you just make a statement relative to the milestone dates on the budget? The publication date and the public hearing date?
David, do you have those?
Yes, sir. The amendments will be posted as per June 15th, I believe, as a public hearing. So, public hospital. Pleasure to actually produce or view all of your consideration, mention that you're ready.
So June, the adoption, and June 12th, the actual approval. Are, are the public hearing, I should say?
Yes. If it's the other half of the public hearing in June 25th, we adopt.
25th, we adopt. Okay. Key days. That concludes the meeting. I'll ask board members again, anything? All right. Thank you very much for attending this meeting. We're going to recess when we can bring that six o'clock on the zoning issue.